Kendra Foley.
Here.
Eileen Schubalzer.
Here.
Lindsay Moska.
Here.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Mark Sideris.
Here.
John Port. Here. I'll just note for the record that Amy Donahue's on the way, should be here shortly, and that Lilly had a previous commitment. This was a -- this meeting is kind of between our normal meeting times, and so she had a previous commitment, wasn't able to make it tonight. First item, executive session, which was canceled for tonight, we'll postpone that until the next -- our meeting in May, on May 6th. We have public forum, don't see anybody here for public forum, so we'll turn to our action items, and a good focus of our meeting today will be to go over some of the policies from the policy manual, and we're almost done. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel?
Nice job.
I'm not going to take it personally that nobody is here, knowing that this is policy night. So the minutes, I don't know if I -- do I need to read them?
Okay, you have two of them, right?
Yes.
The seventh and then the...
And April 5th, and then April 17th.
Okay.
You want me to read them?
Yeah, if you -- maybe the 17th, because we just got that one, so you could read that, and the fifth, if you want to read or summarize, is fine.
Okay, so it's mostly just submitting things that we've accepted and we're recommending to you. I'm trying to see what, if anything, is worth highlighting. Oh, I know, for example, policy DKC, expense reimbursements, there is a question of that, and also policy BID, school committee member compensation and expenses, and BIBA, school committee conferences, conventions, and workshops. We were thinking that we would refer to the budget and finance subcommittee, the issue of whether there should be a change in budgeting to allow for a certain amount per member. The number that was floated was $500 for -- per member, but that's just -- that was purely just, you know, for the sake of discussion, for specified quote unquote expenses. So we are making that referral. We feel that's not our job. Our job is not to determine things like that. So that's one thing we'd like to do.
And we'll come back to that when we go through the policies, correct?
We can do, yes.
Yeah.
But I mean, the referral, I would say we are make -- the subcommittee is making that referral.
Okay.
And let's see, what else? I don't think there's anything notable in April 5th that needs to be highlighted, yes?
May I ask something?
Yes.
The only thing that the -- sorry, the only thing that I would mention is the GCF, the selection procedures for permanent instructional administrator positions. Remember when I thought that it had been omitted?
Yeah.
It actually had been...
Combined.
Combined. I mean, that's just...
So it's still there, but it's in another item number?
Yeah. It threw me off that it had just disappeared, but then we found it in another policy. Yes, just want to make sure we're all good on that one.
It's still there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's those minutes. I don't know if you want to approve them?
Yeah, let's have a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of April 5th.
Second, any discussion, questions, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, thank you. So go to the...
Now, the next set of minutes from April 17th, and right away, the first item was incorrect. IJNDEA, the minutes state that it's included in GBEE, staff cellular and personnel communication services telephone usage policy, but it's not. What I was reminded by the superintendent that actually the mask representative, Dorothy Presser, was going to give us a different number or different number designation for that policy, because it actually belongs in section G, not in section I, and so we haven't heard back from her. So we'll wait on that one until we get that piece, but it shouldn't stop us from approving the large chunk of policies that have passed through. So correct the minutes there on that. The next item is policy JFABB, and we actually do need some discussion, admission of foreign exchange students. What happens is many programs run -- they bring foreign students to America to have a year of high school, and some of them come to Watertown. And what we wanted to know was, what is the protocol around designating someone to be their guardian? Because there are a lot of times when you want a legal guardian. So Lilly Reed made a call to one of the big companies, EF. What she has found out is that every company has different policies, but nobody seems to designate the host family as the legal guardian, so they can't sign legal documents as a legal guardian. So that's one issue to understand. And another is we have -- we found that sometimes the companies will find a host family in one town, say Belmont, but the child is actually going to attend school in Watertown. So then that's another question, do we want to allow that, since ordinarily, we wouldn't be responsible for a student who doesn't live in Watertown? And then there are all kinds of additional legal guardianship questions, you know, something and what we realized was it's a complex issue. It always boils down to the judgment of the Superintendent, that rather than having a policy, we think the Superintendent should continue to be allowed to make a decision based on circumstances. There are varying circumstances, which can range from a person who's terminally ill, and some wants the degree, or someone was unable to complete Watertown High School because of various reasons in their youth, and now they're not intending to use it as a way to get a job, or to enter into any future education, but they would like to have it for various reasons. So we felt it was a discretion of the Superintendent to recommend to the school committee, if such a diploma were to be granted. There is a state law regarding military diplomas, if you, let's say you went to World War II, or Vietnam, and because of it, you were unable to complete your high school degree, and now you would like to get it as an acknowledgement that you did make important contributions to our community and our country, and we would like to give you this diploma. That is covered by a state law. The next is hosting of the policy manual by MASC. You'll remember, we had a big discussion about it at the last school committee meeting, and two of the things that were discussed were the issues of the cost, and the issue of the clause in the contract, which stated that the copyright to the contents of the policy manual would belong to MASK. So Dorothy Presser, who was the MASK representative during our discussions, was asked to let us know the following, when the last price rise for hosting a manual had been, and whether there are plans to do so in the near future, whether we could sign a contract without that copyright clause, and whether, although the contract says over 600 pages, there's additional charge, whether we could be allowed not to do that. We had some discussion, the administrators at the Subcommittee meeting felt that there are important things that you get from MASK hosting our entire policy manual. Among them are the ability to do keyword searches, have hyperlinks to the MASK general laws, and to access crosslinks. And MASK is responsible for keeping all that up to date. What happens now is, we don't have anybody designated to do it, and you'll end up having different copies, different wording, different policies which conflict, because nobody is responsible for making sure that everything is all on the same page. And Heidi Perkins said that when, in her last position in Wellesley, they used this an enormous amount, and asked Presser to find out if Watertown would retain rights to the manual if we took it back later. And among the surrounding districts that use this MASK hosting service are Newton, Cambridge, Lexington, Burlington, Concord, Carlisle, and Wellesley, that it's clearly a valuable asset to those communities. So, we have not yet heard back from MASK on our questions, so we're suggesting not to make a decision until we get the full information back from MASK. That's the report.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the report?
I'll make a motion to approve the report of April 17th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Well, because I know it's not going to be a policy, so about the social media presence, the recommendation is to have people kind of keeping track of the district website, does that mean that we're saying that we will not have any school committee's social media presence?
Yes. The decision was that it's too, there are too many loose ends, if we have a Facebook page, you know, who's on it, all this kind of stuff, and that we felt that the real communication vehicle for the school committee and the school district should be through the school district webpage, and the school district webpage could use a little communications help, and if there were this ad hocs committee of people who are willing to tell the administrator of the webpage when they felt that something important had not been posted, that that would act as a way of increasing communication with the public, without increasing the liability of, like, ending up in a back and forth, becomes an open meeting law issue, et cetera.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So when you say an ad hoc committee, but the idea would be, it would basically, it would be a standing committee, and that it would continue on?
Yes, and it could change. We just feel like the chairman must be part of it, because communication is prescribed by the policy handbook, manual, that it must actually come through the chairman.
So, it's basically a communications committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Any other questions? So motions been made to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Guys have it. All right, thank you very much. Some of these will, a few of these we'll come back to when we walk through the manual. So, so we have then the second reading of policies in Sections B and J. So, we want to walk through those?
It's enormous, which explains the crowd. I can whip through it, or I can not.
Well, I guess, if there are, I don't, it's hard, any changes that we kind of recommended and seemed to agree to have been made to this, correct?
Yes. We already had the first hearing, and we did make those changes.
Right, right. Do you want to just go through and highlight the things that we, if you had an issue of before, and that a change was made? Does that make sense?
Maybe somebody other than I could do that. I don't know. Renee, are you in a position to do that? You can say no. I see the desperate look in your eye. This is, it, this is a process that has gone on, it's gone on with Dorothy Presser from MASK, the, you know, the staff, it's been quite detailed. So, I, I will tell you that we discussed every single thing that was brought up in the school committee meeting. Let's look at the minutes of April 5th, and you can see, those are the things that we fixed, that required discussion.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you about those.
I have the J list, I don't have the B list.
You want to talk about those?
Well, I think, you know, we could, how long is, B is fairly long.
Why don't we just, I'll tell you, the things that came up at that meeting are in these minutes, because that's when we talked about them. So let's just go through the minutes there, of April 5th. So, BDB, we had an issue about school committee officers, and we reworded it. The issue was the-
Which one are you talking about?
BDB.
BD?
BDB. School committee officers. What had come up was the descriptions of their jobs.
Yep.
And we had discussed specifically that the Vice Chairman had a description of a job that we felt was really every member's duty, and that all the other descriptions only talked about things that were specific to that elected position, and not to anything else. Duties of the chair, duties of the Vice Chairman, the Treasurer, and the Secretary. So, we felt that we wanted to only say those duties, which are very special for the person in that position. And in fact, the Vice Chair of the Committee, it says, will act as chair in the chair's absence. And we eliminated everything else, which makes it clear that that's what the job of the Vice Chair is. Which is actually quite sweeping. It actually opens the door, it doesn't close the door.
Right.
So that's the change we made, and we're, so we're offering that, three to zero, we voted to submit that.
So the cha, then on the previous page on BDB, or the duties of the chair, on number four, you added that language, that's in blue?
Yes.
Right, okay.
But that was in the first reading. We didn't change that this time.
Right, right. I think the, I think it's fine, I mean, I think it does, it, there's kind of a broad interpretation one could make about, and any other special appointments, you know, what that constitutes.
Yeah.
It's different, subcommittees are a little bit more clear.
Yeah.
But other special appointments is a broader category, that's, I think, somewhat open to interpretation, but, you know, I think, I understand the spirit of what the point is here.
So that's a change, and so, in the B section, then we get to the-
I would only just say, just typing, we have warrants there, all capital letters, I'm not sure why that needs to be that way. We should, we should say, well, just, rather than say warrants, we should say, you know, signs, signs warrants, as required by, as, as appropriate under state law, because state law can change on that, conceivably, so we want to just keep it consistent with that, right?
Sign warrants.
Yeah, yeah. As designated under state law.
Fine.
Or consistent with state law.
Fine.
Okay.
Okay, so, that's the B section.
Nothing else under B?
No. So do you want to approve B, then?
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments under B? And we've, we, there's no individual ones that we pulled out, other than the ones-
Not in this section, that, nothing that you haven't seen, that you, last time?
Okay. So we want to make a motion to approve policies in Section B?
I make a motion that we approve the policies in Section B.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Guys have it, okay?
Okay, so, as I said, the DKC expense reimbursements, we would like to refer the whole issue of expense reimbursements, how they're administered, whether the amount is in, is the correct amount, it's, how they're used, et cetera, to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Is there a policy on that now?
There's BID and BIBA.
It's not a J policy?
No.
Oh, okay. But what about, what about-
But it's really, it's part of a larger discussion, I think we were all, do we not also have a referral for a subcom, an ad hoc Subcommittee to talk about possible compensation in general?
Yes, yes.
So it seems like it might be an appropriate place to refer that to, before it goes back to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, before it comes back to the school committee.
Yeah, and-
I would say that they're two completely different things, and this-
But it does deal with compensation to the school committee.
Well, this isn't really compensation, this is, this is reimbursement for travel, for conferences, or workshops, or something like that, and what this question is asking is, should this be part of the budget, and should it be a separate line item? I don't think-
And how much should it be?
Right. I don't think that the Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Compensation should be taking up-
Okay.
I'm just, my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm willing to accept that, so then, then we'd like to refer it to wherever you think it should go, either the Budget and Finance, or to another ad hoc Subcommittee.
Well, let's, let's refer it to Finance, I don't want to-
I would make a motion that we refer this to the Committee on Budget and Finance.
Right, right. So, second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Guys have it. So we'll put that on the agenda for a Budget and Finance meeting.
We have not changed Policy GBEBB, which is Responsibility for Supervision of Classes, and the Advice of the Staff.
But let's, we're not even-
Oh, you're not there yet?
Yeah, let's go, let's stay with J for the moment.
Yes.
Let's stay with J. So, we have, we have some that you are here, I know the Superintendent has some comments that she's tracked on J as well.
Okay.
Renee did for-
Then we'll jump down to JFABB, that is, that admission of foreign exchange students.
Right. So let's go to, to that one. And we have one in front of us, is that different than what's in here?
Yes. Yes, it's different than what's in your paper package.
JFAB-
BB.
B. Changes to this policy are forthcoming, is what it says in your packet, so-
But the forthcoming now, it turns out that we, as a Subcommittee, felt that this was a discussion that needed to be had by the full school committee, and which involves the, some liability for the town, and therefore, we felt it was probably something that even the town attorney would want to look at, or, I don't know who else are, so, because it's a judgment call, it's not cut and dried. So, perhaps we could have our discussion, and then we could pass on our recommendations to the town attorney, and see what, what comes from there. Did you want to say something?
I'm just looking at it now.
This, this one?
Pardon?
This one with the purple?
Right, right.
I guess, I have a question.
Sure.
What about a student coming on one of these visas as a foreign exchange student makes their parents no longer their legal guardian? Like, why, like, I'm just confused as to why there's so much concern about their legal guardian if they have parents.
Someone needs medical-
or workshops or something like that. And what this question is asking is, should this be part of the budget and should it be a separate line item? I don't think-
And how much should it be?
Right. I don't think that the Ad hoc Subcommittee on Compensation should be taking up-
Okay.
I'm just, my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm willing to accept that. So then, then we'd like to refer it to wherever you think it should go, either the Budget and Finance or to another ad hoc Subcommittee.
Let's, let's refer it to Finance. I don't want to-
I would make a motion that we refer this to the Committee on Budget and Finance.
Right, right. So second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. So we'll put that on the agenda for a Budget and Finance meeting.
Okay. We have not changed policy GBEBB, which is Responsibility for Supervision of Classes, because, and the advice of the staff.
But let's-
Wait, wait, we're not even-
Oh, you're not there yet?
Yeah, let's go, let's stay with J for the moment.
Yes.
Let's stay with J. So we have, we have some that you are here. I know the Superintendent has some comments that she's tracked on J as well.
Okay.
Renee did for-
Then we'll jump down to JFABB. That is, that admission of foreign exchange students.
Right. So let's go to, to that one. And we have one in front of us. Is that different than what's in here?
Yes. Yes, it's different than what's in your paper package.
JFABB.
BB.
B. Changes to this policy are forthcoming, is what it says in our packet. So-
But the forthcoming now, it turns out that we, as a Subcommittee, felt that this was a discussion that needed to be had by the full school committee and which involves the, some liability for the town. And therefore, we felt it was probably something that even the town attorney would want to look at or, I don't know who else are, so, because it's a judgment call. It's not cut and dried. So perhaps we could have our discussion and then we could pass on our recommendations to the town attorney and see what, what comes from there. Did you want to say something?
I'm just looking at it now.
This, this one.
Pardon?
This one with the purple.
Right, right.
I guess, I, I have a question.
Sure.
What about a student coming on one of these visas as a foreign exchange student makes their parents no longer their legal guardian? Like why, like I'm just confused as to why there's so much concern about their legal guardian if they have parents.
Someone needs medical treatment. Has to be signed by the legal guardian. The legal guardian is living in Oslo. Or there is some kind of financial issue. Who's, how are you going to track down? Do you see what I'm saying? If the person is not living here, then you need someone who lives here who's responsible for what's happening with this student. And under these programs, what we found out is many times, the program does not designate the host family as a legal guardian. And they are not the legal guardian either. It's sort of a limbo land. There is no legal guardian.
They don't, the program itself doesn't assume responsibility?
That's what Lilly called EF, and they very specifically said that every program is different in how they handle this. Yes?
I would suggest that we can discuss this all night long, but I'd be very uncomfortable if an attorney, especially when the town is going to be taking liability, didn't look at this first. So I would suggest that we could ask-
That's fine.
That I meet, I send this to the town attorney firm-
Excellent.
For further review and-
I totally agree with that. And I think the real issue is, we cannot take on liability on behalf of the town. So it's important to make sure that the town is on board. I agree with that.
I'm sure that they would come up with some type of a recommendation or lay out what the issues would be.
Right. And then we can rewrite this policy going forward to accommodate all of the attorney's stipulations.
Given what could come out of there, we may not want to have this policy.
Right.
I just don't know. So I think-
The key question to the attorney would be-
What's the town's liability?
The determination of liability.
Yes.
Legal liability.
Right.
Under these programs or in the absence of a program.
Right.
Where does the liability lie?
Right, because if you look at all our policies, we are very often calling on the legal guardian or parent of the student to, to okay something or to be informed of something. And if there is no one, then, you know, we cannot make the teacher responsible. All right, so-
But, but let me just add a comment here. So, I mean, the previous policy that we had from before, which added the word "living in Watertown with a legal guardian",
Right.
Put the, really put the burden on the student to demonstrate and prove that there is a legal guardian. I mean, that may be what an attorney comes back and says. Well, you, you, you just have to require that there be a legal guardian.
And we can leave it like that. The problem is that under this wording, virtually every, I, because we haven't found one that does it yet, but we haven't gone to everyone, virtually every one of these programs does not specify anyone as a legal guardian. So then you're basically saying we will not accept any one of these foreign exchange students, which can be our decision. But we should understand what we're doing.
We should get all the facts before we take that step.
Right.
Okay. So want to make a motion to-
I would make a motion that we ask the town attorney to look at this for what the town's liability would be in the case of allowing foreign exchange students.
Through this program?
Through the, through the program.
Through any one of these programs. Because when you have a private thing, you just bring over somebody, you know, you have a friend, their kid wants to come for you, they must designate a, a legal guardian in order to enroll.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it.
I will get this to them tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mark.
JJF, which was amended by Heidi Perkins in order to coordinate with what she's doing. And I think we should address questions to her.
J-
Student activity accounts.
JJ.
F.
Just a second. Page-
190, she said. And by the way, if this was all online, nicely hosted, nice buddy, you know, it'd be a lot easier. Okay, 190, 191, 192, 193, 194 is the wording that she suggests.
For the new one?
Right.
So it's 194 replaces-
194 is what we're offering up-
Right.
As the new policy, JJF.
Okay.
And again, add, address questions to Ms. Perkins.
Are there any questions or issues on that? No? Okay.
Okay. JJH hyphen R. Field trip, student travel regulations. We have eliminated the use of vans or private automobiles for trips planned to include late night or overnight student travel. Just flat out, no.
Well, so, so now it's, it's not, not prohibited?
It is prohibited.
It is prohibited.
Our, our thinking is that it's a safety issue.
Right.
And one private-
But that part is crossed out and says "whenever possible", which is fine. But the prohibited part's actually been eliminated.
I think this is a mistake. This is a mistake. We, in fact, prohibited it, did we not?
If I, if-
Go ahead.
I believe that in the conversation that we had in the Subcommittee meeting was that there might be an, an instance where there was a sports event or something that-
Began very early in the morning in Carolina.
There was, there was a, we put "whenever possible" just to cover the fact that there might be a rare exception that would make it so that we didn't have to use a motor coach or wasn't possible. So we did, I remember we did discuss putting the "whenever possible", but the point was that 99% of the time, it, it would be a motor coach or some commercial vehicle that would transport the students. Were you there, Heidi, when we had that? Yeah.
Okay, so the idea of this is ordinarily, if there's overnight travel or late night travel, a commercial motor coach is required.
Yes.
However, overnight can also be the early morning hours. And in the early morning hours, in order to get to something, it's still, could be considered by some people night when you leave. But we want to allow people to be able to do that. But it still must be commercial motor coach. It's not private cars.
Right. Definitely not private cars.
Right.
We have the, the vans that, you know, it may be, a, a coach has an event that's at 8:00 AM and they need to leave at 4:00 because it's in Western Mass or something. So we did talk about the use of the-
Yeah.
The school-owned vehicles, but not private vehicles at all.
Okay, so is there any discussion on that?
No, I don't think so.
Anything?
Questions?
No.
Okay.
JJIF athletic concussion policy and JJIF dash R. The reason, I, we, we were questioned about why are those endless regulations and so on were in here? It is required by state law that our policy manual must have all that. So that's why it's there. Okay? And JP, student gifts and solicitations. So we felt that it should be the Superintendent, not the school committee, that approves solicitation of funds for charitable purposes from the students. There are lots of companies who like to, who would like to access our students to ask for donations, but we feel it must all go through the Superintendent. And then, again, any flyers or anything like that through the Superintendent's office. And then we referred to acceptance of gifts by staff must conform with Massachusetts ethics laws. It's, there's a dollar limit on how much a student can give to a staff member. And it's not the value of a one-time gift. It's the value of all the gifts tendered during that entire school year. So there's a cumulative effect. And we just wanted to remind people to be aware of that. Is that okay?
Questions? Any other questions? No.
That's it for the J items. Did you want to approve J?
Sure. Is there a motion to approve Section J?
I make a motion to approve Section J.
Second.
And I would just note that we've, we've extracted JFABB,
Right.
which is the exchange student ones. So that one-
Right. We can all, I mean, this is a living document. So as we get more information, we can vote it in.
Right. Any other questions or comments on Section J? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. That gives us the ones that we have for a second reading. Next item on the agenda would be the potential policy, the hosting of the policy manual. But my understanding is that Subcommittee is recommending that we hold off on that too.
Well, because we haven't gotten our responses from MASK, which would answer especially the copyright issue.
Okay.
And then we can have a discussion amongst ourselves as to whether the benefits outweigh the cost.
Okay. So we will hold off on that. And perhaps it'd be on the next agenda, but we'll see if we get the information that we need. Next item is the disposition of surplus property. So we, in our packets, we have two items there. A piano that cannot be repaired and a high jump pad that worn out, has holes. It's a safety issue. So those would be disposed of as surplus property. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. Approval of gifts. We have in, three gifts listed. Eighty dollars from Kristen Yvonne Steer to the robotics team, 25 dollars from Mark Boudreau, robotics team, and 500 from Eileen Schubelzer for the 219 Schubelzer Family Drama Scholarship. Is motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it.
I'm going to vote present.
You didn't vote for your own?
Well, seems self-serving.
Thank you for your contribution.
Serving the district.
Yes, thank you for your contribution. And we have some minutes to approve. The first two are, I think, Renee, Renee found these were ones that were back actually from 2018 that we had, had missed in terms of making approval. So we want to kind of correct the record. The first one is on the Athletic Subcommittee from February 28th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. And then there's a Budget and Finance Subcommittee from February 12th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. And then we have the most recent school committee meetings. We have April 1st, which was our, the major meeting for the, at the beginning of this month. And you have the minutes for that. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. And then April 4th, which was a very, a short meeting where we voted the budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Guys have it. Thank you. Back to the Policy Subcommittee.
We missed you.
All roads-
All roads lead to the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, so-
So here's the first reading on Section I.
Okay, whipping through it. IC and ID, ICA is now school year calendar. That's sort of mostly words. ID school day. This says, we're going to notify things, people of things in the school handbook, et cetera. IDB, religious holidays is eliminated. IE, which is new for us. Organization of Instruction. We now have Full Day Kindergarten, which we've had for a while, I guess, but, but it wasn't in here. So we just changed this to show our current configuration. IEA, system-wide school reform, and IGA, curriculum adoption, these are all eliminated. Our IGA is changed so that we don't prescribe a way you do it because that is really an administrative, not a school committee task. New for us, IGB, student services programs. We now have a Director of Student Services instead of an Assistant Superintendent.
I have a question on that one.
Yes?
The Director of Student Services shall be responsible for all services for students who are not eligible for special education. But is, doesn't, the Director of Student Services includes?
Yes.
So why, I don't understand that. Why does it say that?
Because I, if you look at the last sentence, this was, by the way, not to, it was done with Mrs. Maris, but it's, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, "Curriculum implementation of the instructional program and support services programs." Then, "in addition, psychological services, speech correction, homebound and hospital teaching and other such programs which are not designated necessarily as special education still fall under this person's purview." In other words, there are services which are not called special education. But this student services director is still responsible for those. That's all. It's just trying to make clear who's responsible for those programs.
But why would we just, just strike the part about special education? Because-
For all students.
Pardon?
I'd like to say for all students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is a little confusing.
All services for students such as-
Also, also for students, for all students that require psychological services, special, you know, and finish this sentence. It's just a little bit confusing.
Why not get rid of the word "all"? "The Director of Student Services shall be responsible for services for students who are not eligible for special education assistance such as psychological services and services."
I think it's confusing because nowhere in the first paragraph does it actually specifically say those are special education things. But then it says "not special education" in the second one. So I kind of feel like-
Okay, so what would you like to put in the- Would you like to put in maybe the first paragraph to say-
Well, just, even the second-
Strike the "not eligible for special education assistance", I think it's just services for students.
Just, good, just the second paragraph, "The Director of Student Services shall be responsible for psychological services, speech correction, blah, blah, blah."
Okay. So get rid of-
Well, and make it special education. Yeah, well, that's fine too.
Exhaustive list of all the things that are under student services. Because people get confused as to what that person does.
Right, right. Well, so, so they're responsible for special education.
And these other things.
And these other things.
And these other things.
Yeah.
So can we just say responsible for special education assistance as well as psychological services, speech correction?
Yeah.
Then it would be, okay.
So say that again.
Shall be responsible for students, for, for all services for students. What did I say again? Wait a minute, I'll be sure. For all, all special education services as well as psychological services. So we didn't, this person is responsible for all special education services as well as-
Could also just be a colon after students in a list of special education, psychological services, speech correction, et cetera. This is not a this and others, you know what it's like. So after students is just a colon and then special education assistance, psychological services, speech correction, et cetera, like that. Make it a list.
I'll ask, or maybe you could ask Mrs. Maris to make the wording work for her.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
New for Watertown. I G D. I don't think anybody will question changing a curriculum. It's a superintendent's responsibility. I H A Basic Instructional Program. This is in compliance with the law. I H A I Occupational Ed, new for Watertown. Just says there's, there will be an occupational ed program and what it should be, what the goals of it are. Very general. I H A M is rewritten to reflect the law. Any questions about that? Health Education. We've eliminated, or we've changed the I H A M R Health Education Exam procedure. It's a process. I H A M A Parental and Guardian Notification Relative to Sex Education. I H A M B Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. Most of these are in compliance with the law. I H A M B hyphen B Screening Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment. We feel that it's already covered in a different policy, which we've already approved, J I C H. So, we're trying to eliminate whenever there was a redundant policy. I H B Special Instructional Programs and Accommodations Programs for Children With Special Needs. So, in compliance with the law. I H B A Programs For Students With Disabilities That We Do Provide Them In accordance With State and Federal Statutes. I H B A A Observation Of Special Education Programs. This was mostly changes in pronouns.
On that one, it's just a question more than anything. It's interesting, the list here, it starts kind of as if it's a parent guardian who's going to be observing in the classroom. And then it kind of in eight, nine, 10, et cetera, it kind of shifts to this idea of an observer. And like in nine, it says the observer will be asked to submit report, their report of the observation. I mean, is it the expectation that if a parent's doing this, they would submit a report?
No, it's only when you have somebody from the outside that's doing an observation of a, sorry.
Yeah.
It's only when somebody's doing an observation of a program as part of a team process or to provide input for developing an I E P and therefore they have to report what they found.
Right.
I mean, a parent can observe and it really has nothing to do with that. It's just their, their right to go in and observe. But this is specifically when it's an outsider who is being authorized to come into the classroom for that purpose.
That designation happens to number six right before the shift. Like the definition of one observer is.
Yeah, I mean, I would have done two separate ones probably, but, but anyway, I mean, I think that it's not worth trying to make a big change to. That's fine, thank you.
Okay. I H B D Compensatory Education Title I.
Which I H?
B D. I H. Did you have a question with it?
Yeah, just a question. I don't know what the, this isn't a new one, right? This, we've had this before?
Right. Primarily it was that we added the word Water, we added Watertown School District students. Because one of the things that the MASC representative told us was whenever we write a policy, it should include the name of who we are.
Now, just the, the first sentence, fine, Title I funds shall be used to provide educational services that are in addition, in addition to the regular services. The second sentence is an odd sentence to me, I'm not quite sure what it means. By adoption of this policy, the school committee ensures equivalence in the provision of curriculum materials and supplies. I'm not sure what that means. Yes?
So, and Dr. McGinnis could probably speak to this as well. One of the, when we receive Title I funds, we have to ensure the, basically the federal government, that we are providing equal provisions for all of our schools. We have to do a comparability report every year that shows that in each of our schools, our spending is approximately the same so that we're not favoring one school over another or using Title I funds to supplant as opposed to supplement. So, this is actually a requirement and we have to have that as part of being a Title I school district. So, equivalence, I would have thought it was comparable, but I, you know, it's still, the idea is that one school isn't getting more than another.
But if a, if a school is a Title I school, they should be getting more than another.
Right, but you have to make sure that the district, we as Watertown Public Schools are giving the same amount to all three, for example, elementary schools. And then we are supplementing, not supplanting. We're supplementing with Title I funds to those schools in need.
Right. I mean, that's the language I usually see when you talk about Title I is, you know, that it's supplementing, not supplanting, right? Which I would expect. To me, the term equivalence is a, is a, an odd word to have in this context, but it sounds, it sounds like that's what the federal government uses.
Yeah, that's the comparability. It's a mathematical determination.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I H B E A English Language Learners. Rewritten in accordance with, again, a lot of these are legal requirements. I H B F Homebound Instruction.
So, question.
Well, I was going to say, we changed something. It used to say if you couldn't attend classes for four consecutive weeks due to physical injury or suspension or emotional, and we got rid of the consecutive.
Right. So, I think we had some discussion about this in another policy. My question, and I think it's, you answered this, but I've forgotten perhaps, the word "may", is it optional for us to provide this or are we required to provide it?
I would read "may".
Well, "may" says we're not required.
Right.
But I thought we are required under law, but I could be wrong.
So, we are, if, if, I think where this might come in is oftentimes families don't avail themselves of the homebound instruction. So, you know, we, we, I've had this happen where you say, you know, you should be tutored and the family says, no, 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 we don't want that. So, I think the idea is if you put will furnish homebound instruction, then it almost says that everybody has to do it, no matter what.
Yep.
We know it's our obligation to provide the option, but it's not a requirement for the parents to take us up on it.
Interesting. So, it is, it is required that we offer it?
Yes, yep.
But they don't have to take it.
They don't have to accept it.
They do not have to accept it.
The other change is that certified teachers, we took out the word certified because in certain subjects, you can't find a certified teacher who's willing to go two hours a day to someone's house for a short number of weeks or whatever. So, we wanted to have the freedom to be able to send someone who is capable of teaching it, but is not a certified teacher.
Is there, I just had a question about.
A question about taking a consecutive. Just wanted to understand your, your thinking on that.
You, it absolutely cannot be consecutive. It's, students might suffer from, say, migraines and they're out intermittently throughout the year. It, it can be up to, once they hit the, the number of days, then they are eligible, whether it's consecutive or not. And you'll often find students who are out for, you know, intermittent periods for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't want to make a point of this, but, too much of a deal of this, but an alternative offering, a word rather than "may" would be "shall offer". Would that be more accurate or is that?
Yeah, because that implies that.
Shall offer to furnish.
Yeah, shall offer to furnish.
Yep.
Shall offer homebound.
Shall offer homebound instruction.
Yep.
Right.
Shall offer to furnish.
They say no, they say no, but requires, clear that we have to offer.
Yes. So, for the second reading, we'll add that.
Yeah.
I H B G Homeschooling. And we've got an additional I H B G dash R.
Sorry, I'm just kind of a question, general question. So, a homeschooled student, they get a diploma from us or they don't?
They do not.
They do not.
But we have to, our district has to approve.
Approve the program.
Their plan.
Right, I know, we have, we have to approve the program. But then who do they get their diploma from? Or they don't?
They don't.
They don't.
They get anything from the state that says they satisfy anything?
Nope.
Really?
And they don't have to take MCAS?
Right. Which is one of the main reasons we don't give them a diploma. But generally what happens is if a student has completed their, you know, they're 18 and they're moving on to college, they'll come and they'll ask for a letter that says that they've submitted home education plans for, since the beginning and the college is.
You can be admitted to college without having a high school diploma.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so, I mean, I H B G R is just more definition of how, what their rights are, how you work it. I H B H Alternative School Programs Has Been Changed. I H B I A A All-Day Kindergarten. We now have a pre-kindergarten program, which is covered in I H B I B. We didn't feel it was necessary to have a policy that we would have all-day kindergarten because we have all-day kindergarten, just as we don't have a policy to say we have seventh grade. I H C A Summer School. New policy for us.
So, I have one suggestion here.
Yeah?
In the first paragraph, you know, shall make available summer sessions as a supplement to instruction offered during the school year when funding for such programs is available. And then we say, the focus of the program will be remedial work. I would recommend just striking that sentence. I don't know that we need to say that. I would, I would recommend we keep it more open and flexible because in fact, in fact, in the third paragraph, it says, students at all instructional levels may attend approved summer programs for remedial enrichment, you know, or makeup purposes. I mean, you could have summer classes that they're not, they're not remedial. They're in fact, quote, regular classes.
Well, but I think the first sentence is that we have to provide programs that we pay for that are remedial. Am I wrong?
I don't think we are required to do that.
No?
No.
No.
Okay.
People have been paying for many years now.
Yep, and there's lots of schools that don't offer it at all.
Okay. Well, then, do we want to not? We can make any decision we want. We can say we don't require it. We can say we require only remedial. We can say we require summer school and not specify what the purpose of summer school is.
Taking the focus of the program will be remedial work off kind of covers that it's.
Just leave it open.
Just that last sentence.
Yep.
Yeah, just.
Focus of the program.
Flexible.
Will be.
I mean, you know, at some future point, this, this school district may want to offer a U.S. History course or something like that in the summer that students might want to take. And it counts regular credits and whatever else, not a remedial class.
Should we also, since it is not requirement, change "shall" to "may"?
Sure?
Yeah.
Because other school systems who don't have a summer program that their children need to take, send their kids to us.
Yeah, they do.
May make available summer sessions as a supplement to the instruction offered during the school year and get rid of the focus of the program will be remedial. Okay. I H D Adult in Evening Programs. I J New to Watertown Instructional Materials. We changed balanced views to multiples perspectives.
That's fine.
I J R Reconsideration Of Instructional Resources. Any issues with this? Okay. I J J Textbook Selection And Adoption. I J J A Student Purchase Of Textbooks And Supplementary Instructional Materials. Both of those we got rid of and instead we have I J L Library Materials Selection And Adoption. I J L A Library Resources Has Been Changed. Two of you jump ahead several pages, page 328, to the section Library Resources. Still I J L A. I J N D Access To Digital Resources. I J N D B Acceptable Use And Internet Safe Policy Technology Has Been Changed. It's now called Empowered Digital Use Policy.
We struck empowered and responsible, right?
Right. I J N D C Internet Publication And I J Has Become New. If you turn to page 339. I J N D D Now, this is policy on social media. And it, it emphasizes some things which sort of were implicit, but not necessarily explicit, like teachers should not give out their private cellphone or home phone numbers without prior approval of the district, et cetera.
Can I just?
Sure.
So, the one thing about that, so I would just hold on the social media policy because we're, we presented that to the union and we're going to have discussions around, you know, if they feel this is in the best interest of their, their membership. So, this is the one that we said that we were going to just, it might be beyond the actual adoption of the entire policy manual, but we're working on it.
Okay. And I J N D E A Employee Email Policy, is that?
That's the one that we moved into G.
Is that something that you're still waiting to hear back from them also, the union?
No, this one is, we're set with this one, but it's going to move to G. But you, it's still a policy that you're going to have to approve at some point.
This is the one that's going to move to G B E E or something like that?
This is the internet safety?
No, this is.
Employee email.
The employee email policy.
I N J, I J.
I J N D E A.
We think it should be in G.
It's a new policy, so you make sure you want to know what's, what we're proposing, but it's not going to end up in I, it's going to end up in G.
Okay, I don't have it in here. Oh, there it is, there it is.
It's going to end up in G B E E if it passes. Okay. I J N D F Internet Safety. Okay. I J O A Field Trips.
I question on this one. On, actually, number seven?
Which seven? The old seven or the new seven?
Field trips, number seven.
Yeah, but there's a, there's an old one and a new one.
No new number seven.
All trips should allow.
Yeah.
Oh, down there.
Student access with regard of.
Yeah.
Family ability to pay.
I mean, we've had discussions about that and it's an important issue. You know, I'm sympathetic to it, but in fact, that's not what we've done. I mean, we, we have approved field trips that are not accessible to students that aren't able to pay. I mean, we've simply done that. And so, I mean, I, you could, we, I would hesitate to approve something that, you know, we don't comply with, although I'm very sympathetic to the issue. I think we've had discussions about how to maybe address that. I mean, we could.
Are you thinking of trips like a trip to Costa Rica? Because I don't think that's what's covered as a field trip. Because I don't think that's what's covered as a field trip. This is like in a, during a school-
Like we, not too long ago, we approved the, the trip to, to Europe, right?
Yeah, I don't think that's covered as a, that's not a field trip.
No, that's-
Overnight.
It's not a whole class that is going, this is a special trip.
Isn't that, so you're saying those are different?
That's not a field trip. A field trip is, today, we're going to Plymouth Plantation for the eight-hundredth time.
Yeah.
Aye.
You might want to just add language that is specific, because I see what you're saying, but I, I know the intention of this is for all, like, school day field trips.
Like a single day, the whole-
But it doesn't say that anywhere.
But we can say it. We can add that to the heading, School Day Field Trips.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, just define what this means, because this whole separate policy is about overnight.
Right.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with overnight.
Is there a separate overnight policy?
There is.
Overnight field trip policy? There is, okay.
It's in J, actually.
So, shall we call this?
We just approved it.
School Day Field Trips?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine.
So, can I ask a question on that, too? So, if, because there are circumstances, I'm sure, that there are field, day field trips and a parent is not able, or guardian is not able to pay. Who does pay, then? And how does that happen?
I feel that the principal finds a way to make sure that every child who wants to go can go. I have never heard, have you heard of anybody who wasn't able to go to the Museum of Science because they?
No, never. I'm just, I'm just wondering logistically how this works. We often, the PTO often pitches in for things. I mean, I'm sure there's a way to do it. I just worry that then someone is on the hook to say that they will, they are responsible for finding a way. Is that us? Is that the principal? I'm just trying to think about playing this out. How does it work in, in real time? I love, I mean, I agree with the policy. Yes, Heidi has some thoughts on this.
Yeah, Heidi?
The field trips are in a field trip revolving fund. And usually, no one can really estimate exactly what a field trip will cost. We get an estimate on the bus, it may be more or less. So, you may have, you know, fifty dollars that you had in excess on the field trip this week. And then, next week, you have another field trip that's twenty dollars in deficit. And you use that revolving fund, a little under, a little over. In addition, if PTO or anyone else wants to give a gift, it would go into usually a principal's discretionary gift fund for things like pictures or things like this. If, if we were going to put the revolving fund in a deficit, we would get in touch with the principal and say, you know, we need another twenty dollars, so I can't put the revolving, I'm going in a deficit. And we can transfer from their discretionary gift fund to the revolving fund to keep the revolving fund whole. If, if it wasn't a principal's gift fund, then it would have to kind of, there's a couple mechanisms.
Okay, I don't think we have a principal's gift fund, but we do have PTOs, we can do that. I just, I'm just interested to know how it works.
Yeah, and I, I would say it's important that, and I, they probably are, but that principals are aware of this. So that even if-
They are, yeah.
You know, I mean, in most cases, for a day trip, transportation would be, a bus or something would be covered by the district. So, it could be the case that your kids are supposed to bring money for lunch or something like that. And maybe some family says, well, we don't have the money for lunch. So, I mean, principals just need to be aware that, that no one should be excluded for that basis. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Just one more on the, on the next-
Which number?
Paragraph. It says, Adults Must Undergo a Cory Check. Shouldn't it say something like adult, adults that are either chaperoning or participating? Because that, that says that every adult needs to go through a Cory Check.
I guess you could say adult chaperones, because you wouldn't want to say that the reenactor at Plymouth Plantation, who's going to talk to our kids, should have a Cory Check.
Right, right, right.
Adult chaperones?
Yeah, I think that would clear it up a little bit.
Yeah, and because-
You could probably just say chaperones instead of adult chaperones, because I don't want to imply that we have-
Okay.
Child chaperones either.
Because there are requirements for these commercial bus drivers, et cetera, which are included in the contract with the bus company. Okay. So, chaperones must undergo a Cory Check. IJOB Community Resource Persons and Speakers. So, speaks for itself, it's new for Watertown. IJOC School Volunteers. We value community volunteers. On the other hand, there has to be someone who's organizing it and coordinating it and knows that it's happening. So, that's the building administrator. IK Student Progress Reports to Parents, Guardians. So, that supersedes IKAB. IKE Promotion and Retention of Students. IKF, which is Graduation Requirements and Credit for Promotion, has been changed because we have new requirements for graduation.
So, I guess my, my only question with this was whether we really need this here? As a, in the policy manual, the graduation requirements? It was in the program of studies and we, we approved the program of studies. So, I mean, it's just another place that we would have to make a change if we did change. Like, we added language requirement or something like that. But I don't know.
I would advocate for keeping it as a policy.
Yep.
Because you set the graduation requirements. I mean, you know, we, we do handbooks and programs of studies, you know, as, as a school community. But the actual requirements are promulgated through the school committee, so I think I would keep that.
Okay.
Okay. IL Evaluation of Instructional Programs. ILD Student Submission to Educational Surveys and Research. A lot of people, again, would like to have access to our students for their own purposes, but we feel that there needs to be prior approval from the building principal or designee. And that the parent guardian must give consent. And students are not required to submit to any survey analyses or evaluation that reveals, and there's this list of nine things, and we added immigration status. Okay? IMA Teaching Activities/Presentations and IMB Academic Freedom and Study of Controversial Issues. You will look at IMB. MASK provided us with this wording. I think the important thing to note is number four. Teachers should ensure that the reasoned arguments of all sides of an issue are presented as opposed to giving equal presentation and emphasis in classroom discussions. IMD School and Classroom Celebrations has been changed to School Ceremonies and Observances. IMG is new. Animals in School, obviously, animals who are service animals are permitted. I did take home a hamster one summer from the fourth grade class, and I didn't quite understand that the hamster was never going back. That it was not just at my house for summer camp. So, that is section I, and this is the first reading of I. We will make those corrections and come back for a second reading at the May meeting.
Okay. Sounds very good. Thank you very much again, I lean to you and, and your, and the subcommittee.
This committee, I am telling you, does its work.
Yes, you do your work. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Building for the Future, our building projects, starting with the elementary schools project. Mark?
Typical update, we're meeting again Thursday evening to continue going forward with the new designs of the schools. I will say that tomorrow evening, there is a first reading for a loan order of twelve-plus million dollars, which pretty much means this project is moving forward. So, it's an important milestone for the community. It's an important milestone for the Building for the Future Elementary Schools Initiative. And I'm looking forward to all of those things in our meeting on Thursday.
All right, six, six o'clock here in the chamber.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. High school update project.
So, not, not all that much new to report, except for that we have recommended an OPM for the high school project that will be going to the OPM review panel at MSBA on May the sixth. So, we look forward to receiving approval for our selection and then we really begin the work at the high school, so.
Okay. Any questions on the Building for the Future? Anybody? Okay, thank you very much. Two thousand nineteen budget update. Typically, we would have had that at the beginning, but the early part of the month, but we're also in the midst of the FY twenty budget. So, Ms. Perkins is going to give us a quick update at this point for, for the current fiscal year.
So, as you can see, we are through March thirty-first, the end of the third quarter for the fiscal year. Currently, we show an available budget of three million one oh three two sixty-eight with the remaining budget percent at six and a half percent. And I just put in for comparison, at the end of the third quarter for FY eighteen, the unencumbered balance was two point five million or five point six percent. So, it's running pretty closely. We did prepay some out-of-district tuition in June, and that really accounts for that little bit of an extra bump that we have left right now. The majority of the budget favorability is the result of savings realized from some unfilled positions that we had, some of them full year, some of them partial years for leaves or other things. And unpaid leaves of absent staff, turnover, and the out-of-district tuition that was prepaid, as mentioned. And we had some savings in the special education and Minuteman transportation lines. We have a number of expenses that are not yet reflected or encumbered, which will be year-end professional development costs, staff tuition. I mean, I know I'm reading this and I apologize if anybody's at home and, and doesn't have the document. Club and activity stipends, and we have other hourly and per diem costs, long-term subs, et cetera. We are currently recruiting for the seven part-time kindergarten aides and two doors and security monitors that were approved by the committee earlier this year. So, while they'll be, you know, not full salaries, if they were to be filled right now, that'd be about another twenty-five thousand in salary that would be encumbered. And on the expense side, we have a number of large encumbrances already being put in in April for some unplanned flooring replacements driven by lifting floor tiles, asbestos abatement, some equipment that's listed here, other things for the facilities department. And frankly, they keep coming up every single day with something breaking or something wrong with the floor. So, it just keeps coming. We did take a couple of items off the capital improvement plan earlier this year, as you know, the, some tile cleaning and painting, the air conditioning feasibility study, which are also encumbered. During our FY twenty budget presentations, we projected having some funds available to purchase the elementary technology that was not able to be funded next year. And fortunately, as we've continued to assess some of the savings that occurred throughout the year, we were able to just order the elementary iPads, all the carts and stuff, so they'll be totally outfitted, which is great, and they'll be able to, they should be able to use them for the remainder of this year. So, everybody's excited about that. We've got a PO or a rec and, I should say, right now for the interactive projectors for classrooms not yet outfitted. If we have funds, that will be grades three, four, and five that do not have them at all now, so it would be fully outfitted. And we do expect to be able to do some or all of those. We're looking at quotes now. Replacement of some of the Chromebooks, some at the elementary level that just needed to be replaced. And then, for the middle and high school, those also, the ones for the elementary, were in the original FY twenty budget requests, but we weren't able to fund them. But we did have money freed up to be able to do that. So, those have all been ordered and we're excited that we're able to get those items now. We also had quite a few requests with our new athletic director coming in and really going through all the equipment and the uniforms. And quite honestly, some of the uniforms and numbers are falling off and, and different things. So, we do also have a revolving. So, between looking at the savings in the budget and the revolving, there was some equipment that had to be replaced, one-man sled and the wrestling mats and things like that that were just beyond their useful life or in disrepair. So, the athletic fees and gate receipts go into the revolving and that's certainly offsetting what's here. But you'll also see, when you look at the budget report, that right now, it's showing in a deficit, but that will be, you know, a, a transfer later in the year as everything sort of falls out at the end of the year to make that whole. In addition, since this report was written, some of the other things that I did not include, the projector screen at the middle school suffered a pretty large tear. That's going to be a little over ten thousand to replace that. We, if we can, we'll do some of the security camera work. We are getting the security cameras on the Phillips, but that is being charged to some revolving funds. The gym speakers at the middle school is another seven thousand. They are not working, and I guess two of the four are not working, so they cannot, particularly as a safety issue, we want to get those done right away. They can't always hear the announcements. We're looking at vape detectors, some instruments that are in disrepair that need to be replaced. So, there's quite a few asks and we're going through everything and just seeing what we can afford to do with the funds that we may have available for this year. And that's pretty much where we're at right now. And if anybody has any questions, feel free.
Okay, sure.
So, I just had a question, first of all, thank you. Had a question about how we prepaid tuition last year. Is that something that, I know that was, that made sense for last year, and I hope it's something we can do again this year, and I just wondered your thoughts on that.
Yes, as we look at everything, we do have, and we have had in sort of a placeholder PO to prepay tuition for the end of this year. That's still in right now, as well as the ESCO that we pay back for the utilities to the town. We have a placeholder PO for four hundred thousand, and which is what the school district has given that money back to the town the last two years. That can fluctuate after the final bills come in, but those are already spoken for. If we did need to change the PO for the prepaid tuition, up or down, we'll do that. But we at least had it in for, for the year for similar amounts, or, or maybe a little more, a little less than last year. So, that is our hope.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Mark?
I, I do want to appreciate the effort that you've made to take care of some of the requests for FY twenty and FY nineteen with the way, you know, with the positions that weren't filled. I think it's important that we're continuing to address those issues, as well as the flooring issues and so on and so forth. I think those are, this is a very important things to, for the community. And I appreciate that you're able to identify and the purchase orders that you're doing to keep us moving forward for FY twenty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the FY nineteen budget? All right, again, thank you very much for, for that update. Next item, the school committee chair. I don't have any particular report, other than I do want to mention, it's not listed here. Upcoming subcommittee meeting for Budget and Finance is on May second.
Yes.
Great, at six to seven in the administration building. May second, the Thursday, six to seven. And that will focus on the building rental fees, which is a topic that's, we've had various discussions on over the last several months. Pardon? Okay, the athletic subcommittee is working on-
May first?
Coming up with a meeting?
Yes, we had a couple of cancellations, but I think we, I think we got May first down. Yeah, I think we have May first.
Okay.
We have May first down, so.
For athletic subcommittee, at, at what time, do you know yet?
That's what we have to decide. I think we have to talk to Ryan, because he's coaching lacrosse.
Okay.
So, we need to find out when that practice ends.
Okay. All right, thank you. Superintendent, report.
Excellent. Sorry, for my report this evening, actually, I just would like to remind folks of some events and activities that are happening within the district. We've had a short period since our last meeting and a vacation, so not much has happened within the district. But I would like to mention, again, a couple of events that are coming up. First, and, and very exciting, is this Thursday, on April twenty-fifth. In addition to the very exciting school building committee meeting, there's also the CPAC Awards. Annually, we recognize educators within our system for their outstanding achievements with their students. And it's a great evening, and I would encourage anyone who would like to go to the CPAC Awards to attend. April twenty-ninth, we have the Anti-Bias Coalition Meeting. As I mentioned, the- As I mentioned in the last meeting, we are encouraging and hoping that we'll increase the membership of that group, but certainly on the twenty-ninth, we're looking for feedback from community members about what we could be doing as an anti-bias coalition. So even if you're not interested in fully joining the team, we would encourage people to join us at five-thirty in room three oh one of the Phillips administration building, just to get some feedback and input. April the thirtieth, I just became aware of an event sponsored by World in Watertown, which is a showing of the documentary Gender Revolution, A Journey with Katie Couric, and then there'll be a panel discussion afterwards, and so that's a very important event for the community, and I'll send out something to the families as well, as well about that. May fourth is a Saturday, and that is the Watertown Helps Out. I'm not sure if everyone's aware about Watertown Helps Out, but many of the projects that have been proposed are actually directly tied to the schools. So if anybody has any time on that Saturday morning, there's, you can go onto the website for the Watertown Community Foundation and sign up for different projects. It's a great day to give back to the community. May tenth is the exciting Dancing with the Stars, and so I would encourage people to go to Dancing with the Stars. Then the one thing that's not.
MC is right.
Yes.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
He is, Mark?
Yes.
Mark is the MC, so.
And we have staff members that are dancing, so it's very exciting. One other thing that's not a date, but I would like to mention that the Watertown Community Foundation has started a teacher tribute campaign, which is an opportunity for families or individuals to recognize staff members, whether they be teachers, administrators, you know, custodians, food service workers, coaches, you name it. If you want to just highlight or recognize any one individual, they are, they have a campaign to do that, and I think that it ends on April the thirtieth, so all that information is on our website, as well as the Watertown Community Foundation website. And then the last thing is the vaping presentation on May thirteenth. We are hosting a presentation just to provide, not just parents, but also students, with information about the dangers of vaping. So, a lot of activity happening within our district. I recommend that, you know, all members of our Watertown Public Schools community avail themselves of these great presentations, celebrations, and social events. So, we do great things here in Watertown for our community.
Did you mention your coffee?
I did not. And the superintendent's copy is on April twenty-ninth as well. I'm actually going to start at seven-thirty, not at seven, because we believe that our ABC meeting, our anti-bias coalition meeting, might take the full two hours, so I will make sure that people are aware that we start at seven-thirty in room three oh one of the Phillips administration building.
For the evening?
And also, right, the nine o'clock morning one as well. It's really truly a coffee at nine o'clock in the morning. Seven o'clock is, seven-thirty is desserts and, you know, water.
Coffee dessert, okay, thank you very much. New, any new business? New business? Announcements, we just did a lot of announcements.
Sorry.
So I think we, I think we covered all of these, the only, I will note that the next school committee meeting will be May sixth at seven PM here in this chamber. Public forum, no one for public forum, is there a motion to adjourn?
Show moved.
Home favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.